Good. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call the order of this meeting of the seventh of December 2023, City and Nashville Appointing Board. Can I get a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thanks.
Mayor Donches, Michael Peterson.
Here.
Scott Leclair.
Here.
Adam Varley.
Here.
Maggie Harper here. Alderman Klee.
Here.
Dan Hudson.
Here.
Bob Ballinger.
Here.
Larry Hirsch.
Here.
Cameron Green.
Here.
Okay, so we have a full house here. We're gonna keep moving with the agenda. So next up, approval of the minutes. We have minutes in our packet from the November 16th, 2023 meeting for the board. Has anybody had a chance to take a look at those and wanna make a motion as to whether they're ready for us to accept as written or need amendments? Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes of the November 16th, 2023 Planning Board meeting as written.
All right, so we have that motion by Mr. Ballinger to accept the minutes as written. Do we have a second? Second by Alderman Klee. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And abstentions? So two abstentions. Yeah, just two.
I'm an extension also.
Oh, three. Okay, three obsessions, yeah. So that passes.
Is that two extensions?
There was three.
Three.
Who was the third?
Uh, Michael.
Mike. Yep.
Maggie and Larry.
Larry, yeah. Communications?
Good evening, Mr. Chair and fellow members of the Planning Board. As of Wednesday morning, there's been no further communications since we've uploaded the information on Wednesday.
Okay, thank you. Any reports from committees?
Nothing to report.
All right. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and read the procedure of the meeting and hearings. So the procedure in the meeting and hearings are as follows. After each legal notice of each conditional special use permit site plan or subdivision plan is read by myself, the board will first determine if the application is complete and ready for us to take jurisdiction. If we do take jurisdiction, the public hearing will begin, at which time the applicant or their representative will be given time to present an overview and description of their project. They'll speak to whether or not they agree with the recommended staff stipulations, and the board will have an opportunity to ask relevant questions of the applicant or staff. I'll next ask for testimony from the audience. I will first ask for anybody wishing to speak in opposition or concern to the plan to come forward and speak. If you desire, you can come forward to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and this will be your time to express your concerns or ask questions you may have regarding the plan. Next, I'll ask for testimony from anyone wishing to speak in favor of the plan. The board will then ask any relevant follow-up questions of the applicant. The applicant will then be given a rebuttal period, at which time they'll respond to any of the concerns raised by the public testimony. After this is completed, the public hearing will end, and the board will begin a public meeting, at which time we'll deliberate and vote on the application before us. I'd ask everybody to keep their remarks of the subject at hand and to not repeat what has already been said. The board wants to be fair to everyone and make the best possible decision based on testimony presented and considering all applicable approval criteria established in our Nashville Revised ordinances of Conditional Special Use Permits, Site Plans, and Subdivision Plans. I'll thank everybody for their attention and ask if you do have a cellphone, please go ahead and put on vibrate or turn it off at this time. Okay, so moving to the agenda. First four cases on here, the old business, eight twenty-three dash zero six six zero zero six seven zero zero six eight zero zero six nine are all have been previously tabled to our February fifteenth meeting. So we move on to the next item, which is new business subdivision plan. This is case number eight twenty-three dash zero one nine eight. Robert Champagne, owner, proposed one-year extension of a previously approved three-lot subdivision. This property is located at twenty-two Conan Road. So for the board, has anybody had a chance to take a look at this application and wanna make a motion as to whether it's ready for us to take jurisdiction? Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I'd like to make a motion to accept jurisdiction over new business case eight twenty-three dash zero one nine eight, property located at twenty-two Conan Road.
All right, so we have that motion by Mr. Ballinger to take jurisdiction. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Varley. Any further discussion by the board on the jurisdiction? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None, that motion passes unanimously. Do we have somebody from the applicant to present this?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Jim Petropolis, civil engineer, Hayner Swanson, Three Congress Street in Nashua, New Hampshire. We're simply seeking a one-year extension. It's a conventional three-lot subdivision at the corner of Yarmouth, then twenty-two Conan Road in Nashua. Nothing has been constructed. Our client is seeking a little bit more time, and the conditions that were approved and attached with this approval remain in effect. So if you need to have me dive into the case, I can, but it's a simple one-year extension. Thank you.
Yeah, okay. I think I'm good. If the board needs more info, we'll mask. Thanks. So any questions of the applicant by the board? Okay. Anybody in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concern to the plan? Anybody in the audience wishing to speak in favor? At this point, I'll give the board one last opportunity to ask any questions of the applicant or staff while we're in the hearing. Okay, I'll go ahead and close the hearing. Seems like a pretty simple extension. I think this is the first one, Scott?
Yes.
Yeah, so pretty typical for some of our cases, but anybody have any comments or questions we wanna talk about in the meeting? Anybody wanna make a motion? Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve new business case eight twenty-three dash zero one nine eight, property located at twenty-two Conan Road, finding that it does meet the requirements outlined in subdivision NRO section one ninety dash one thirty-eight G, subject to one staff stipulation as written in the staff report.
All right, so we have that motion to approve eight twenty-three dash zero one nine eight, where the stipulation is stated by Mr. Ballinger. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch? Discussion? Yeah.
No.
Okay, yeah, Mr. Hirsch had it already, so. Any further discussion on the item by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, moving on. Next up, case number eight twenty-three dash zero zero five three. This is Frank N. and Maria G. Thibodeau and Paul D. and Gail M. McFawn, owners. Proposed lot line adjustment. This property is located at six and eight Kanata Drive. So for the board, has anybody had a chance to take a look at this application and wanna make a motion as to whether it's ready for us to take jurisdiction? Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I'd like to make a motion to accept jurisdiction over new business case eight twenty-three dash zero zero five three, property is located at six and eight Kanata Drive.
All right, so we have that motion by Mr. Ballinger to accept jurisdiction. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Varley. Any further discussion by the board on jurisdiction? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We have jurisdiction. Do we have somebody to present this application? Thanks.
Mr. Chairman and the board?
Yeah.
Name is Frank Thibodeau, owner of eight Kanata Drive. We wanted the property line changed basically because of convenience. When I had to go to my backyard to deliver things in the backyard or work back there or even have contractors go, and I had to ask permission of my neighbor to cross his line to do so. So this straightens this out and makes more logical landscaping and everything else. In a nutshell, that's why.
Okay. Questions by the board for the applicant? All right, I think we're all set at the moment for you.
Thank you.
Is anybody in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concern to the plan or have questions of it? Anybody in the audience wishing to speak in favor? Come on up.
Hi, board. Hi, good evening. Paul McFawn, six Kanata Drive. I'm wishing to have you grant this little hundred and ninety-seven square feet of gift of the yard, so this gentleman can have a better ease of getting in and out of his driveway without actually going on my property and allowing him to enjoy his property a lot easier.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Okay. For the board, any further questions of the applicant or staff while we're in the hearing? All right, I'm gonna go ahead and close the hearing. So seems like a pretty straightforward, small, very small, lot line adjustment with two people that seem to be fully in favor of it, so I don't see any issues on my end. But any comments by the board or questions, discussion? Okay, some, go ahead, Mr. Hudson?
Just relative to conditions, I don't see reference to Joe Mandola's letter, so we should add that. There's a letter dated December first.
Okay.
He just had some questions about the plans and want confirmation on a couple things, so.
That was December first letter?
December first, yep.
From Joe Mandola?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Mr. Ballinger?
Just to Mr. Hudson, were those were those minor drafting things or was there anything of substance that?
Looking through them quickly. There was a question about the plan scale being off on the print or whatever. We had, there's a question about existing bounds, and just wanting those differentiated differently from the proposed. There's a wetland buffer delineation shown on the plan, but no wetland signist or anything signed or stamped the plan. And then there's a question about, I think there's some sheds and things that are in the buffer, just asking if those are remaining. So I think I view it all as planned clarification stuff, nothing of major concern to the engineering department, but just in completing the final revisions to the plans, we have some questions to be addressed.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Alderman Klee?
Thank you. The only question that I'd had, and this would be for Mr. Hudson probably, comment number six about the GIS showing the drainage pipe. Is that of concern or is that still within the?
It's, again, I view it as a planned clarification. There's a pipe there, so we just want that reflected on the plan.
Okay.
As well as any easement that goes along with that, so it exists. It's not like we're adding one. It exists or it doesn't exist. It appears there is one there, and we just want that shown on the plan, so.
Yep, go ahead.
This is just a quick clarification for me. So that the, it does show it on the plan, so it would show which property the easement would be on, whether it'd be six or eight. Is that?
Yeah, I'm not asking necessarily for a proposed one. I think this is an existing pipe. Seems to kinda straddle the property line, so we just wanted the pipe shown on the plan. I think the catch basin is shown on the plan, and our GIS shows a pipe going out that direction to the back of the property, so we just wanted that shown on the plan.
Okay, thanks. I think the?
We're in the, yeah.
Is the engineer here tonight?
I can address the question.
We have to reopen the hearing in order for that. Do you feel like it's necessary?
I'm comfortable working with them offline, conditional upon approval. There's other things to be addressed, so we're gonna have to do that anyway, so.
Yeah.
So whoever, surveyor can reach out to us and work through the final revision.
You can look right at the map and I can point it out and show you where that, that?
Yeah, I think, I think.
I know where it is.
Yeah.
It's between the other property, not him and I.
Okay.
It's another property next to me.
Yeah, hang on. We can't go back and forth without being in the thing. Yeah.
And the TV can't hear yourself.
Yeah.
And again, it's a minor issue, so we just want clarification. So if that's the response we get when the landscape or when the surveyor addresses the rest of the questions, that'll be acceptable. Thank you.
I think it took a year to get to this point, so.
All right. Any other comments by the board while we're in the meeting? Okay. All right. Anybody wanna entertain a motion? Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to approve new business case eight twenty-three dash zero zero five three, property is located at six and eight Kanata Drive, finding that it does meet the requirements outlined in subdivision NRO one ninety dash one thirty-eight G, subject to five stipulations. The first is with respect to a waiver of section one ninety dash two eighty-two B nine regarding existing conditions plan, which shall read "is granted and will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation." Stipulations two through four as written in the staff report, and add a new condition number five, which stipulates that the applicant shall meet all requirements and concerns outlined in the December first, 2023 letter from Joe Mandola of City Engineering Staff.
Okay. All right, so we have that motion by Mr. Ballinger to approve with those five stipulations. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Hudson. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion passes. Okay, thank you. Yep, that was unanimous. All right, moving on. Case number eight twenty-three dash zero two hundred. Principal Realty Partners LLC is the owner. This is being a property preservation LLC applicant, and it's a proposed two-lot subdivision with this property located at seven Sherman Street. So with regard to this application for the board, has anybody had a chance to take a look at it and wanna make a motion as to whether it's ready for us to take jurisdiction? Alderman Klee?
Make that motion.
All right, so we have a motion by Alderman Klee to take jurisdiction. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion by the board on the jurisdiction? Okay, all those in favor of jurisdiction?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Okay. All right, you're good to go.
All righty. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Planning Board members, and planning staff. For the record, my name is Carl Foley from Fieldstone Land Consultants, 206 Elm Street, Milford, New Hampshire. I'm here tonight to represent the application before you this evening and present a two-lot subdivision of tax map fifty-nine lot nine located at seven Sherman Street. The lot currently has thirty-eight thousand one hundred and ninety-nine square feet, point eight seven seven acres, with frontage along Sherman Street.
Recording in progress.
Should I restart?
No, just keep going.
Okay.
Subdivision proposes the creation of one new lot, fifty-nine one eighty-six, consisting
of nineteen thousand four eighty-one square feet, point four four seven acres, leaving the former lot fifty-nine nine with eighteen thousand seven hundred and eighteen square feet, where seven thousand five hundred square feet is required. The proposed, the property currently has a single-family home with overhead electricity, municipal water, and sewer services. The proposed new lot will be serviced by municipal sewer, water, gas, from Liberty Utilities and underground electricity. Several trees are proposed to be removed to allow for the installation of an infiltration basin located at the rear of the property. A stamped stormwater report was submitted with this application. Our engineering department has since been revising and updating the plans addressing the staff report and engineering comments from Joe Mandola, of which we have no issues in satisfying these comments. On November sixteenth, Fieldstone met with the Nashville Division of Public Works to request a waiver of the street militarium prohibiting pavement, paving, coding out on Sherman Street. The request waiver was granted unanimously. We are seeking two waivers with this application. We request a waiver from showing physical features within a thousand feet of the site. The proposed subdivision is minor in nature, and there is no apparent need or benefit for strict adherence to this requirement. We too are seeking a waiver for sidewalks. There currently are no sidewalks along Sherman Street, and there is no ability to further subdivide either lot. We propose a financial contribution of five thousand eight hundred and fifty-three dollars in lieu of the required one hundred and fifty-three point zero six feet that would otherwise be required along Sherman Street. At this time, I entertain any questions that the board might have.
Okay, thank you. Anybody from the board have any questions for the applicant? All right. Go ahead, Mr. Peterson.
I have a question for staff.
Sure, go ahead.
In the report under project description, it says seven Sherman Street address will maintain the existing home with a new home proposed for, it says seven Sherman is the new home. Shouldn't five Sherman be the new home?
Correct.
So we gotta change that seven to a five.
Thank you.
In that paragraph.
Okay. Other questions by the board for the applicant or staff at the moment? Okay. All right, I think we're okay at the moment. Anybody from the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concerned in the plan? Come on up.
My name is Brian Guley. I live at ten Sherman Street.
Okay, just say it one more time, just 'cause you were a little far from the mic.
My name is Brian Guley. I live at ten Sherman Street.
Okay, thanks.
I just had a couple of questions, actually.
Sure.
I guess I'm unsure of the waivers that he's looking for as far as sidewalks, and I don't recall what the first one was.
First one is basically that the plan doesn't show a thousand feet away from the site, everything, you know, that's there, every tree and structure kinda thing.
Okay.
Yeah. And the sidewalk one is, is a relatively standard waiver that the city, that the board makes available to folks that in lieu of, you know, the requirement of our code is to build a sidewalk when this happens. But we, we have an option within our land use code to have the applicant make a financial contribution. It's a specific amount that we dictate or have calculated and put within, within our guidance that can be used in, by the city for sidewalks within the, it's in a quadrant, so it goes into like a fund. And then that fund can be used to build sidewalks where it's kinda makes more sense than a bunch of little parts of them. So that's, that's basically what they're asking for.
All right, yeah, I didn't know if it was, we're talking about just a sidewalk in front of?
No, they're proposing not to build one, like, and just leave one that has, doesn't connect to anything.
Mm-hmm.
And to provide a contribution to the quadrant fund instead.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so that's what they're asking for, so.
All right. And this request is to, excuse me, this request is to split the current lot into two.
Correct.
Two lots.
Yeah.
Front to back.
Correct. Yeah, two long, thin lots, but with frontage on Sherman.
Yeah.
Each one having frontage. Yeah.
All right. Okay, thank you.
No problem. Okay. Anybody else in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concern or have any questions of the plan? Anybody wishing to speak in favor of the plan? At this point, I'd see, is there any questions by the board? For the applicant, I'll give you a chance to, a rebuttal period if you feel like you need one, or?
A rebuttal of some sort?
We did have one square, I don't know if you?
I think you answered the question first slightly correctly.
Okay, all right. I'll just give you the opportunity if you wanna add.
And I think I mentioned in the, in the presentation that we have no problems with staff comments, and we're currently working with Joe to clean up some of the things that he's requested.
All right, thanks. All right, so for the board, any further questions of the applicant or staff while we're in the hearing? All right, I'm gonna go ahead and close the hearing. So moving into the meeting, so we got a, you know, a one into two sidewalk. Seems like it's calculated the way that we would normally calculate it, the contribution anyway, and the waiver is a pretty typical one for this style of subdivision and size. So no issues on my end. Anybody have any comments or just questions for the board itself?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Ballinger?
Just a question for staff.
Yeah.
Is November thirtieth the, the most current review letter from Joe Mandola? That's, that's what's cited in the staff report?
I believe so. Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions by the board? Anybody wanna make a motion?
Mr. Hudson?
Mr. Riley?
Sorry. Yeah, Mr. Chair, I will make a motion to approve new business eight twenty-three dash zero two zero zero subdivision plan located at seven Sherman Street, and that will be with the finding that the plan does meet the requirements outlined in site plan NRO section one ninety dash one forty-six D, with a total of ten stipulations. Stipulation number one being a waiver request from section one ninety dash two eighty-two B nine to show physical features within a thousand feet, and that will read "is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation." Stipulation number two being a waiver request from section one ninety dash two twelve A one requiring the construction of sidewalks, that will read "is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation," with the understanding that the application will, sorry, the applicant will make a payment of five thousand eight hundred and fifty-three dollars in lieu of sidewalk construction. Then stipulations three through ten, reading is written in the staff report.
All right, so we have that motion to approve by Mr. Riley, with the ten stipulations as stated. Do we have a second?
Second?
Second by Mr. Ballinger. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, next up, new business site plans. This is case number eight twenty-three dash zero two zero one. This is NAS IND Simon LLC owner. Proposed one-story seventy-two thousand square foot industrial flex building with accompanying site improvements. This property being located at forty-four Simon Street.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, before the board takes action, I'd like to recuse myself from this case.
Okay, sure. All right, so still having quorum here, so not an issue. So for the board, has anybody had a chance to take a look at this application, wanna make a motion as to whether it's ready for us to take jurisdiction? Alderman Klee?
I'll make that motion.
So we have a motion to take jurisdiction by Alderman Klee. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Harper. Any further discussion by the board on jurisdiction? All those in favor of jurisdiction?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? That motion passes. We have jurisdiction. All right, Jim, you're up.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Jim Petropolis, professional engineer, Hayner Swanson, Three Congress Street in Nashua, New Hampshire, tonight representing the property owner NAS IND Simon LLC. With me this evening is Tim Engelbert. Tim is the project architect with Randall Paulson, doing business on Tech Park Drive, right, in Nashua, New Hampshire. Nashua's only architect, actually, in the city, so we're proud to have Tim here. You don't need to stand. I was just introducing, doing a little PR for you, Tim. Just right into the record, we are seeking a site plan approval for an industrial flex building on Matt B., lot twenty-two forty-seven. I'm gonna quickly go through the facts of the project, and then Tim and I will try to answer any questions that you might have. My good friend Scott, are you gonna bring up some drawings for me?
We had a crash, so, but we should be good in about a minute.
He's getting there. He's getting close.
Let's see.
We have him in front of us.
Okay, I'll get started then, Scott, and catch up.
Yeah.
This property is located at forty-four Simon Street. It's a six-point-seven-seven acre parcel located in the PI Park Industrial District. And the property is located, is abutted really by an industrial building to the north, an industrial building to the building to the west, Simon Street to the south, and Nashua Canal to the east. And overall, if you're familiar with Simon Street and Whipple Street, it really contains a combination of another, a number of commercial and industrial buildings. I don't know if you have the aerial there, Scott, or, I think it's the first slide, actually, the other way.
I don't think that was part of the presentation, let me take a look.
As background, this property actually was once part of a bigger property. It was part of the site to the north, originally developed in the early 70s, and I can't recall if it was digital or if it was terradyne. I think terradyne was in there for many years. But this parcel currently contains 616 parking spaces, it's completely paved. In 2017, that former digital building was redeveloped, and they actually cut off about 100,000 square feet, and it made this 600 space parking lot along Simon Street basically useless and needless. So we subdivided that property to create this lot. It is at the end of Simon, it has two curb cuts onto Simon Street right now, it's a flat site, as I mentioned, it's currently paved. There are utilities, that's fine there, Scott, thank you.
Yeah, there's no area, unfortunately.
There's currently utilities there from Simon Street, from the cul-de-sac, there's a sewer that runs north, it's a public sewer, it's in a city easement. There's also a drain line that runs from Simon Street and turns at 90 and discharges into the canal. What's being proposed tonight is a redevelopment of the site by eliminating the large expanse parking lot and constructing a one-story 72,560 square foot industrial flex building with accompanying new site improvements. The building is set up to handle one tenant, or it could handle up to four. You've seen the lines of demarcation on the drawing. Those four tenants would occupy maybe 18,000 square feet apiece. Each tenant would have a small office component in the front, and then the balance of the building would generally be high bay in the back for either storage, light manufacturing, or assembly. Other elements to the plan, as you can see, we do have the two curb cuts to Simon Street. The first curb cut in the lower part of the plan is to access the 141 space parking lot in the front for employees and visitors. And then the second curb cut in the back is really to get behind the building. For loading docks, up to 16, we're not sure they would need that many, but it's up to 16 dock doors, and there's also a space for trailer parking for 10 spaces. So the project has balance between building, parking, and loading and trailer parking. We do have full access around the building to the north, which is a requirement for the fire department. Open space, currently the site has 25% open space, we will end up with 37%, we're adding some green versus the kind of the sea of pavement. We've provided landscape and lighting plans in our plan set, all in compliance with the City of Nashville's regulations for lighting. Landscaping really focuses on along Simon Street and in the front parking lot. Stormwater, I think we've got a good story to tell. Right now, this whole 600 space parking lot just dumps right to the river. There's the existing conditions, it just gets hard pipe right to the canal, I'm sorry, with really no treatment. In accordance with your regulations, when you redevelop a site, you're really asked to improve drainage to the maximum extent possible. What we plan on doing is constructing two surface practices for stormwater. If you scroll down a couple sheets, Scott, please. Yeah, perfect, right there, it's fine. So two stormwater practices along the east side of the site, again, to attenuate, they provide qualitative and quantitative treatment. The result is significant reduction in water getting to the canal, not that the canal has a capacity problem, it really doesn't, but it provides treatment in those stormwater areas where there currently isn't any. Traffic, TIR report was provided as part of the application, 152 new weekday trips, 32 in the morning, peak 35 in the afternoon, really low numbers. One would not consider a use like this to be a heavy traffic generator. The TIR worksheet indicated that further study's not done, or not needed. And then, let's take a look at the building, please, Scott. Tim prepared a wonderful-looking building for us. Architecturally, it's a flat roof, fixed glass windows, combination of tilt-up concrete panels and then metal panels in the front to give it a little bit of architectural flavor, a neutral color scheme, and really kind of a more modern version of an industrial flex building compared to the buildings like on Northeastern Boulevard that were built 40, 50 years ago. We've asked for two waivers, 19279E, which is requirement for survey of information within 1,000 feet of the site. And then Section 19072 architectural standards for roof pitch and materials. The reason to support the waiver is, we did that in a very formal letter, Mr. Chairman, on October 18th, it sets forth the reasons for the waiver request, and it sets up how we comply to spirit and intent and the hardship, and I would submit that that's part of our application process. But essentially, surveying 1,000 feet around the site is needless. And then the architectural relief, you know, we think the code is a little too restrictive. They ask for pitched roofs on all buildings, it really wouldn't work here for an industrial building. So really, essentially, to give it a more contemporary feel, we think that's a positive waiver. If approved, we're expected to start construction probably in the spring. It's about a 10 to 12-month construction project, so sometime in late '24, '25, the building would be available to industrial tenants. In summary, we think the application complies to all your standards. The conditions of approval are acceptable to our client. We did receive comments from the engineering department, I think they're fair comments, I think they're readily addressed, and that would be part of the process moving forward prior to signature. So we respectfully seek your approval this evening, and we would be happy to answer questions.
Okay, thanks. The, just quick, I see it on the plan, but just to kind of make sure, on the public side here, the trail, that's along the canal, that's being maintained, and the access through it is still sort of there, right? Isn't there, there's part of the trail system on the?
So there is, there's a wonderful, you know, it's all part of Mine Falls Park.
Yeah, right, yeah.
I believe that easterly property line is currently fenced, so there's no direct connection, there is a connection from the abutting property.
Yeah, there's no blocking of the trail, though, with this exercise.
No, not at all.
Yeah, okay, yeah, thanks. Any other questions for the applicant by the board? Doesn't sound like any.
Okay, great, thank you.
There isn't anybody in the audience, so I don't know if there's anybody online, I'll throw it out there. Is anybody wishing to speak in opposition or concern?
I think about five people.
Anybody wishing to speak in favor? Okay. Any further questions by the board or the applicant or staff while we're in the hearing? Anything else from you folks?
I'd like to work on my comedy routine.
Sure? No, thank you.
All right, thanks.
It's nice to let you have a really quick evening.
So I'm gonna go ahead and close the hearing. Moving to the meeting, seems like, you know, sort of a pretty good, I mean, this, I don't know if you've been out there, I have, it's basically a giant parking lot right now, undeveloped, so it looks good to have something, that's a pretty industrial area, I think, you know, a lot of big truck access and stuff is pretty similar, or pretty common in that area, so.
Yeah, I would just say, you know, you were asking about the APIC on the trail, I mean, when I look at the plan, it's actually gonna, you know, improve that a little bit, and that there'll be some landscaping there, instead of just, you know, like a section of the parking lot that's not in very good shape, so.
Yeah, okay.
But yeah, I think it's, you know, obviously consistent with the area and well-designed plan, so.
Okay. Other comments or questions within the board here while we're in the meeting? Okay. Anybody want to make a motion? Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would make a motion to approve new business A-22-0201, site plan located at 44 Simon Street, and that is with the finding that the plan does meet the requirements outlined in NRO Section 190-146D with a total of 15 stipulations. The first stipulation is a waiver request from Section 190-279EE requiring all features be shown on all adjacent parcels. That will read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Stipulation number two is also a waiver request from Section 190-172 with respect to certain building architectural standards, and that will read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. And then stipulations three through 15 shall read as written in the staff report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Riley. So we have that motion to approve with the 15 stipulations as stated. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Harper. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? That motion passes unanimously. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, thanks, you too.
Thank you very much.
All right. We'll wait for Bob here, and I will move on with the agenda. So next up is a review of the tentative agenda to determine proposals of regional impact. Has anybody had a chance to take a look at the linked tentative agenda, want to make a motion as to whether there are any potential for regional impact? Mr. Riley?
Chair, I would make a motion that having reviewed the tentative agenda, I do not believe that there are any proposals of regional impact.
All right, so we have that motion for no proposals of regional impact on the tentative agenda by Mr. Riley. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ballinger. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion passes. Next up, we have the referral from the Board of Aldermen for ordinance O-23-059, and this is amending the land use code notice provisions table in historic district commission's review procedure. Sam, you gonna talk on that one?
Sure, thank you. So you've seen this before, this was before you just, in an earlier form, and then it went to the Planning and Economic Development Committee and full board. We did receive some feedback from the Aldermen, and we have amended in respect to that feedback that we heard. So to hit the high points, this is a three-part change. The first is amending some language in the historic district notice provisions. This removal of language stipulates that we notice HTC applications in the newspaper. I'll leave it there, moving to the second part of this. This table, there's amendments all over the place, part of it is bringing things into compliance with state law, there are a number of references that just were not accurate to various RSAs, and then we were bringing our mail time, our signage time, all basically up to 10 days. So we're just basically standardizing our practices as best we can. But column B, publication, this relates to noticing in the newspaper. And we've had some trouble lining up our application cycles with hitting when we have to get agendas into the telegraph for noticing in the newspaper. Part of this is because we're working with applicants, sometimes it's a moving target whether or not a project's going to be on a specific agenda, and it just, it creates some challenges for us. But also, back in 2020, the state had amended the RSA requiring notification of planning board and HTC in newspaper. They said, hey, if you have a town website, you can post agendas there and put it in two public places, and you're good, you don't have to notice in the newspaper. So we are getting with the times, I'll say, but in the same breath, we're also saving quite a bit of money. We have a $10,000 budget, that is, the majority of which is allocated towards noticing in the newspaper. ZBA still has to be noticed in the newspaper, but while we're at it, we might as well pull planning board and HTC agendas from the newspaper, and that will save us probably $5,000 to $7,000 a year of taxpayer funds. And then just into the third section, there is another reference to a section of RSA that just doesn't exist, so we corrected that.
Okay, thanks. Any questions of these amendments? Alderman Klee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm in full favor of this, both as an Alderman, and I was very pleased to see that it went up to 10 days for the notifications. I agree, while, I know there were some that still felt that it should be in the newspaper. Our newspapers are very sporadic, technically speaking, we have a Sunday paper is what we have, so it's a once a week, and as was pointed out, it becomes very difficult trying to meet that timeline, and I think that just puts too much pressure on both the applicant as well as our staff trying to do this. I think all these changes are very good, I'm very much so in favor of them, and I liked the idea of increasing some of the five-day notifications to 10 days, putting the signage out on the property. I know that, while you can't see it when you drive by, I've had people who've called me and said, I saw a sign on a property, what's that all about? I usually tell them to call the planning department because I don't have the notice of all the signs, but it does catch people's eyes. I was glad to see that they increased from five days to 10 days, or at least that they maintain a 10-day type of notification, because sometimes, you know, people are on vacation, don't necessarily see those signs. This kind of adds to it. When they talked about the historic district, one of the, Alderman pointed out, you know, the historic district is not just that of those people that live within that area, but it belongs to the entire city. And while I do agree with that, I also want to add to it is that, yes, but it's still the property within that neighborhood, and anything that happens to those particular units, they buy into the historic district, it takes effect of their property values. So while the city is very proud of its historic district, it's those property owners that are right in that area that are truly affected by it, it affects their property values and so on, so they're the people that I am more concerned about, and that's why I'm glad to buy all these, and I'm truly, strongly in favor of all the changes that have been made, and I applaud, you know, Sam and so on for everything that he did to try to work with us, so thank you.
Okay. Mr. Riley?
Just a quick question, because it looks like some of the standards already contemplated the at least two public places, so I'm just wondering, I mean, obviously it's not specified in the ordinance, but is there like a standard two places where the public notices are?
Yep. Yep, so we have one place in City Hall, I believe we have a second and another location, and then the library as well, so we go above and beyond. And we did add at least two public places because some of these had it, some of them didn't, and we just wanted to be fully consistent with the table.
Alderman Klee?
Yes, I'd like to add something. One comment that got brought up at the Aldermanic meeting was, why don't we state that we're going to put it on a Facebook page, or we're going to put it here, or we're going to put it there? And that's because the truth is that different types of media are ever-changing, and we would be here constantly trying to, whether it's on X or whether it's on what was called once Twitter, you know, all those type of things. So it was just easier to basically say, we will do this, we're in over-compliance of the RSA, and the RSA itself also states what we have to do. So I didn't think that we necessarily, I agreed that we did not necessarily have to state that it will be in this newspaper or that newspaper, they change, and, I shouldn't say that, I should say social medias or so on, but the city does always maintain at least two sites, usually three.
Okay. Any other discussion on this? Anybody want to make a motion? Again, motions on these would be for either positive or negative recommendations and potentially with comments. Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I'd like to make a motion that the board give a favorable recommendation with respect to ordinance O-23-059 regarding land use code notice provision tables and historic district commission review procedure.
Okay, so we have that motion to provide a favorable recommendation for O-23-059. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? That motion passes unanimously. Okay, and then we've got a couple referrals as well, they're Aldermanic resolutions for authorizing the sale of tax-dated properties. There's one for Seven Ponderosa Avenue, this is R-23-177, and there's also one for 17 Jackson Street and Elbridge Street, which is R-23-182. Sam, do you want to just talk through these two together, and then we'll take them separately as? as the motions?
Sure. So the city is taking these properties for back taxes. The Ponderosa Avenue, that is a trailer, that'll be a private sale, it's part of an HOA that's just excess property that we can easily dispose of. The Bridge Street property, this will be sold to Liberty Utilities, they own an adjacent parcel, there's a gas substation there, and for more of, I think, strategic and also security reasons, it's a smart sale to Liberty so that they're able to better protect their site, and it's in their interest, and it just makes, I think, logical sense for us to sell that property to Liberty.
Okay. Questions by the board on these? Mr. Hudson?
Just a statement, in addition to that, the city has a combined sewer overflow structure adjacent to that property. Our rights to access are, you know, aren't well documented, so to speak, so Liberty's agreed as part of the purchase to clarify that language and grant us access. So from that aspect, we're doing something better for ourselves as well.
Okay. Other questions on either one of these? Okay. Anybody want to do motions, and we have to do them individually here, but... Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to give a favorable recommendation regarding resolution R dash two-three dash one seventy-seven regarding authorization of sale tax-deeded property of Seven Ponderosa Avenue.
All right, so we have that motion by Mr. Ballinger for a favorable recommendation for R twenty-three dash one seventy-seven. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Riley. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That motion passes unanimously. Mr. Ballinger, do you want to take the next one?
Certainly, Mr. Chair, thank you. I'd like to make a motion, board make a favorable recommendation regarding resolution R dash two-three dash one eighty-two authorizing the sale of tax-deeded property located at Seventeen Jackson Street and Elbridge Street to Liberty Utilities.
All right, so we have that motion by Mr. Ballinger for another favorable recommendation this for R dash twenty-three dash one eighty-two. Do we have a second on that? Second by Alderman Cleese. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, that motion passes unanimously. All right, discussion items. So next up on the discussion is a nomination committee for officers for twenty-twenty-four for the planning board. So just how we've done this in the past, usually one person from the board kind of takes the lead on sort of running the nomination process, and usually goes on a few weeks, and usually sends an email out to request nominations, and then those nominations come back, you know, in the first meeting of the year, and we sort of vote on a slate, if you know what I mean. So, a little different than the past years, I'm not looking forward, I'm not looking to be chair, I've been doing this a long time, so I'm ready to kind of move down, I mentioned I'm going to, I'll send a letter in that I will stay on as an alternate, so that's not a problem. But, so, I need someone else to step up. So, but this can be done through the process. I don't know about the other folks here, Ms. Harper is currently secretary, and Mr. Riley is currently the vice. I don't know if you folks are still interested in those roles or want new roles or increased roles?
Yeah, I would be, I'd be happy to continue to serve as vice chair, I would rather not move back to the chair position.
He has been chair too, so. Okay. Anybody else? Ms. Harper, you want to be considered? Either role?
I've been thinking about it, I'm not sure that I want to be the chair, but obviously if there's a need for that, I'm, you know, I'm willing to step up.
Okay, good, it's good to know, all right. Anybody else?
Is anyone else interested?
Interested, I mean, throwing your name out, because you don't have to decide today, I mean, well, let's decide, does anybody want to take charge of the email process to ask everybody? And yet, reminder, you have to do individual emails to each person, it's not a group email.
Thank you. And they respond.
So, and they respond, and you tell them to respond back to...
Yeah.
To planning.
No.
Alderman Cleese?
Sam, correct me if I'm wrong, I think they can send a group one as long as they do it to BCC, and that way, no one can hit a reply all, so whoever does it can send a group message as long as you make it a BCC.
I'm pretty sure that's what I did.
Yeah, so you don't have to send it, every single person a separate message, it makes things easier, and no one can do a reply all, so.
Yeah, and then I think someone had an instruction of like, you know, who do you recommend, you know, for these three positions, kind of thing. Sounds like Mr. Riley's willing to have his name stay on one of them if you folks are interested. Ms. Harper could go either way, so that's a good sign. Anybody else throwing their name out there, just so that people know? You obviously can do it in private through one of these emails, so.
Don't everyone speak at once.
All right, I'll leave it at that, we can do it through the process.
Yes, thank you.
All right, so who's going to do the, do you want to do the emailing?
Yes, I'll send it out.
Okay, so Ms. Harper will do the emailing to everyone. I think that's all we need to do with that for now, at this point, so. Any further discussion items? Sam, Scott, anything? Anybody on the board? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Ballinger?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
So we have a motion to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none, that motion passes, we adjourn seven fifty-six on mine.